Into online news filed with the township clerk and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo.
Present.
Mr. Pallack.
Present.
Mr. Shonner.
Present.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here. Okay, at this time, the meeting's open to public for comment on items on the agenda. And nobody has signed up, so we've closed that portion. And we move to committee reports. So I'm gonna start. I don't have too much because we just met. We just had a board meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, but the, we did have a finance meeting and we also had a personnel meeting. Um, there's some things on the agenda tonight that we will be voting on regarding those two areas. Um, so we can, I'm gonna mention a couple of the things now, but then as we move on.
Nobody can hear you on the.
Nobody can hear me? Hello?
New microphones.
It's on.
It's red.
Is that better? Whoever's texting here, let us know if it's working. Okay, all right, so a couple of things that we will be voting on, um, as the meeting moves on that we just, that came up in the finance was the boiler situation at LRP. Um, we are, it, gonna be hopefully passing the resolution to pay the next portion of it. There was some, um, external things that came up during the project that added to the overall cost. So that is also on the agenda for this evening. Um, some pipes that they found that were broken that needed to be repaired. So I'm thankful that we found them now before we had a bigger problem. Um, personnel, it will, is on the agenda. We'll talk about that as we get closer. And then I attended New Jersey School Boards on October 24th through the 26th with Mr. Marzullo, uh, Mr. Grosso and Mr. DeVita. And it was, uh, really helpful as a board member. There's a lot of information there. It was three days of busy, um, I like to call it professional development for the Board of Ed. And, uh, I learned a lot and I'm looking forward to bringing back that to the board. And so I appreciate the opportunity to go to that. Um, that's all I have for now. Mrs. Miga.
Maybe they can't hear me either. Here we go. I also attended the, uh, finance and personnel meeting with Ms. Dora. And I attended the SELC meeting with Mr. Marzullo. The SELC meeting was very interesting. There's a lot going on in the buildings you would not know unless your child comes home and really tells you. Um, very good stuff. They're doing a, they're doing a, a good job. I mean, they're trying to find presenters and they're really working hard. I, I give them a lot of credit. Um, and that's, that's all. There's an APT meeting tonight at the high school. Obviously, I'm here, I can't attend, couldn't attend it. And I didn't attend the, um, the Black and Gold Club meeting. But one of the things I would like to, can I say this now? You don't even know what I'm gonna say. How would you not? I'm gonna just say it. I would like to, um, say a big congratulations to Mr. Tower. He's one of our crossing guards that's been in the district for a very long time. I don't know, Tony, do you know how many years he's been? It's been a long time.
It's a long time, yeah.
Right, it's been a long time. And you guys did a great job with like a clap out. You had the police department here. It was so nice to see, I saw it on Facebook. But it was nice to see how the town and the school got together for the good of the kids and Mr. Tower. And I, I commend you and I certainly commend Mr. Tower for early years of service. That, that was very, very touching of them. And when we get to South End, all. That's it for me. Thank you.
Mr. Marzullo?
Uh, nothing to report on, on, uh, this evening. I, you got, I attended the.
Yes.
Board of Ed convention with you and the SELC meeting with, uh, Ms. Miga. Uh, again, a lot of things going on there, uh, helping, uh, contribute to, you know, learning a lot at the board, uh, convention and, uh, just to reiterate what Ms. Miga said that they are doing. Uh, the faculty that is on the SELC committee is really putting together a great plan, uh, for the students to help all these students. So, uh, but in addition to that, I have nothing really there to report.
Thank you. Mr. Shonner?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. And Mr. Pallack?
Yeah, so. Past week, uh, I was able to attend the FSA meeting at North End School. Um, their FSA meetings are very well attended by their parents and they also use Zoom to en- ensure that the maximum number of people can reach, can be reached on those evenings. Um, we, we had a very good discussion about many of the items that we're, we're putting forward. Uh, one it was the security plan and the use of the security officers as we move forward. Um, secondly, they did, they wanted to have information about the referendum. And, uh, spoke very highly of the ad hoc committee that's moving forward through the superintendent and going to provide us with information and feedback on where we need to go in regards to that initiative. Um, a large portion of the time is, is dedicated, especially to class time and physical space in their building and how they need to utilize that space and how their specials do, do, uh, really, um, I don't want to say suffer, but they're compromised. They're compromised because of the inability to be able to, um, get into certain rooms and have separate rooms for them because art is on a cart, music is on a cart and so forth and so on. And that's something I think we have to address down the road. And, uh, and finally, um, also very, uh, very focused on the idea that we now as a district has to move through our WIN program and other programs to really focus on the loss of instructional time during the pandemic. And, um, just through programming and just continue to re- assert ourselves in, in that direction to ensure that our, our students are reaching the norms that they need to reach. But overall, excellent meeting. Parents, they're very, very involved in the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Pallack. And Mr. Wolf. How are you tonight?
I'm great, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Um, I guess I'll just, I'll talk about off-school council, basically, and what we've been doing at the school. Um, last time I was here, I was talking about how homecoming wasn't a bad, that was coming up. It happened. So, um, with that, it was a gr- it was a successful event. Um, at first, we were nervous about the amount of people that were coming. Oh, not a lot of people turning their forms, but eventually we got over 200 people, which is a success considering last year, there was a lot of criticism towards it. Um, the thing is, we started to realize with that event, because it's one of our biggest events of the year, that even now, a few years down the line from like the initial virtual learning, COVID still has its effects on our schools. A lot has changed and not for the worse, not for the better. Um, but it's just a different culture and we're trying our best to adapt that and bring people back in. Because, um, people, I know a lot of people who didn't want to go to homecoming because they were scared to dance, scared to dress up. A lot of that, and I understand that, but it's also, we want to make events that people will just have fun at and learn to not care because we want to provide a more, I don't know, like, a more supportive school. And I think that comes through school spirit. Um, our events that are coming up now, this month, we're starting Teacher of the Month. Um, so because we have student of the month and each month that's picked by criteria. Um, but we thought that it would be beneficial to have a kind of Teacher of the Month thing as well because we know that, um, in recent years, obviously with COVID, COVID, lots of staff things have happened at many schools across the country. And we have to support the staff that we, we do have because they're doing the best they can and they're doing a great job. Um, so yeah, we're gonna have that each month, um, highlighting a different teacher, um, and kind of like rewarding them in highlight, yeah. Um, but then we're also this month doing a Thanksgiving week cornhole event where it's kind of like a cornhole competition. And the winner gets to, the winning grade gets to pick like positions for another event that we're doing the next month called Deck the Halls, like where people get to go, which Deck the Halls is like a Christmas thing where we decorate the hallways of the school and each grade competes, decks, decorates a hallway. I'm, I'm rambling. Um, but yeah, so that's basically where we're at right now. Our goal is to, um, incorporate the school, but also the community as well. We want to do a movie night in December, a Christmas movie night that's geared towards, um, families as well. I mean, I still want to go because I love all Christmas movies. But like family-friendly movie type Christmas movies like Polar Express or something, that we'll, we'll have a night for that. And also next year, we're trying to plan a color run as well that would get the community involved. Because I remember that was a, a great success with South End when they did it. Not, I forgot what year, but it was a great success and.
Remember that.
I'm sad I missed out on it. So, yeah, so basically that, those are our goals for this year. And also, um, by the way, Clue, the play, the, is next week, November 18th and 19th. If you are free, it's 6:30 on November 18th and 19th, Friday and Saturday, but also 1:30 on Saturday. And it's sure to be fun. So yes, thank you.
And get your tickets fast because it sells out fast.
It's true, yeah.
Very quick. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So tonight, we have a board presentation. Mrs. Matheo? Yeah, I want, I would like to move. You're gonna use that, right?
Yes. So, good evening. I'm Linda Matheo, Principal of South End. Welcome to South End, everyone. I'm happy to be here tonight to speak to our playground expansion, um, project that has been ongoing at South End. So I wanted to give just a little background before I showed you exactly what our plan is because I didn't want to forget to thank everyone involved in this project. I'm going to read it so I don't forget anyone. In August of 2021, South End lost one of its own. Nicholas Storms, a member of our South End family, lost his courageous battle to cancer. South End staff began a conversation on what we could do to remember Nikki and keep him part of South End for years to come. From those conversations, an idea for a playground in his memory emerged. We believed that a playground would be the perfect way to honor a little boy who loved to play outside, ride his bike and just be a kid. A playground would be a visible part of South End and would provide the children of this community an additional place to have fun. It would become a place, we hoped, where the Storms family could find comfort and support and know that Nikki would always be in our hearts and a part of our school community. As we often do at South End, we turned to the FSA for help. Mrs. Torrey and Mrs. Dow, presidents at the time, were very receptive to earmarking our South End major fundraiser toward the expansion of the playground project in memory of Nikki. In April of 2022, a very successful tricky tray was held. The support from the Cedar Grove community and surrounding towns was overwhelming. We were on our way to making our dream of Nikki's playground a reality. There certainly is truth to the saying, "It takes a village." Adding a playground sounded a whole lot simpler than it proved to be. Like all projects, we soon realized there was a great deal to work out before any equipment could be installed. We have many think, people to thank who rolled up their sleeves and got to work. Our FSA turned to Chad Matta Gika, a South End father and a project manager, for this project. Mr. Matta Gika never wavered in the goal of making this playground happen. Working in conjunction with our ground supervisor, John Bannon, and with help from our BOE and Jason Limbo from Fredro Corporation, who happens to be a former South End student and his family still resides across the street, the important work of readying the area became a full-time job. These three men deserved the biggest of thank yous for never giving up in spite of major challenges. Chad, John and Jason, you are truly amazing and were dedicated to our children and to this project. We were blessed to have the support of the Storms family from day one. We thank you for your generous donation of the playground equipment, in particular, the climbing dome, that would be added to the Gaga pit for the children to enjoy. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Storms and Christopher. Additionally, we had an amazing group of parents and South End friends who painted on our blacktop, four-square, copycat, tic-tac-toe, and we now call that area the path where our children are able to play and have fun. A sensory path will be added in the spring. They say a picture is worth a thousand words, so tonight, I'd like to take you through the playground expansion and show you exactly where our new playground will be. So first, I started off with the beginning, which was the tricky tray where we raised a great part of the funds that would be used for the, um, the playground area. And, um, to this evening, where the check will be, well, was officially given already to the Board of Education and they will accept the funds this evening so that we can begin the installation of the project. Those of you who are South End people know that our children play at recess time in three main parts. We play on the blacktop area, which has basketball courts. We play on the field next to, um, the, the blacktop and the equipment part. That's another part of the field. That's the field adjacent to Harper. We play on, of course, the playground equipment that has been here for a number of years. And we also play on what's now the path. Um, and the reason that we've, um, moved to that area is if there's any kind of heavy rain, that field becomes too wet for the children to play on, um, the next day. Takes a couple of days for it to dry out. So we had to find an alternate part for the kids. Um, with the rising enrollment, there is at least, I would say at any given time, anywhere from 180 to 200 kids up on the playground, um, during the two sessions that are playing. So we, we need to spread them out a little bit. And so they go on a rotation basis. They, they know it's either rotation A, rotation B, rotation C, um, and where they're playing for that day, between the blacktop, the field, um, and the playground. And so we've added the path in, in case it's wet. This will be the site of the new playground. So it is adjacent to where the picnic tables are. Um, there is a funnel ball, um, over on the end there. Um, and the reason that we picked that spot was because it has the most room. So the kids that, um, may be playing in the equipment that we're going to install, there could also be kids sitting at the tables if they just want to sit and talk during that time. There'll be a field area there still that they can play in, um, if they want to play ball. So we felt that it would give us the most room to do a number of different things when the kids were on that part of the, um, playground area. This is what the equipment will look like. So that is Gaga pit. And Mrs. Manning, our gym teacher, already knows she's going to teach all the kids to play Gaga ball outside and follow all the rules. Um, we also have the climbing dole, dome, which was the donation given by the Storms family that is added to our playground area. Um, on the playground itself will be, um, this, um, template. Um, the thumbprints are the thumbprints of Nikki's classmates so that his, part of his class will always be up on the playground, um, area. Um, we had a very ambitious group of parents who came in over the past few months on weekends and did the painstaking work of painting on the blacktop different areas for the kids to play on. So they did, um, as I said, a copycat, they did tic-tac-toe. Um, they're going to add a sensory, um, path for the kids up more toward Highland. Um, and I think the other thing is four-square that's there. And this weekend, even the four-square court got colored, um, very brightly with paint. The kids went crazy today when they saw it because they hadn't seen it painted in. And there is the painting. And there's the kids benefiting from it. They had a great time with that. There's the four-square court. And there is newly painted this weekend, um, for the kids. One of the, um, challenges that we faced was that the area that we had picked for, um, the new playground does flood. It gets water and the water, it, it retains water. So there, there has to be a drainage, um, put in for it. And thank you Board of Ed for helping us with that. And, um, that should be done in, we have a little timeline here. That should be done in February, um, from Jason Limbo, um, in Fredco Company. They're gonna come in and, um, take care of the drainage issue that we're having so that the kids will be able to at least play in the playground area, um, after it's drained a couple of days and things where it's not going to retain that water. Um, so here we have, um, some milestones that we're looking forward to as we move forward with this. By accepting the gift tonight, um, the Board of Ed, we will then be able to formally order the equipment. Um, that equipment will be, will come in and will be housed at one of the installer's warehouses. The drainage will be taken care of. Um, and we're looking toward early spring to have a ceremony to, um, you know, just dedicate our new playground and, and open it to the kids to use. So we hope that, um, you know, this will, um, keep Mi- keep Nikki a part of South End. The children will enjoy it and it will be here for many generations to come, I hope. And I also hope that the FSAs will continue to add to it, um, and, and make it a great play area for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miga. I look forward to seeing it. Okay, Mr. Grosso, superintendent update?
Sure, just a couple of items. So just in reference to the, uh, the referendum committee, just to give you an update, the committee has met over the course of October examining long-term and short-term solutions. On October, um, 28th, members of the committee took a tour of the elementary schools as well as LRP to understand the current state of enrollment in each elementary school. Our last meeting in October included a presentation with District Architect Dan Dressel to review several options, the impact it could have on the logistics and the cost. I reported during the October Board of Education meeting that a preliminary recommendation would be reported to the board based on com- community feedback in November, but the team would like to continue conversation, examine a few other options before making a recommendation. A meeting is scheduled for the end of November with Dan Dressel attending the meeting for further exploration. And I've said this before, this, this team of people are phenomenal. The, the ideas that, uh, they have explored, come up with, um, really just trying to dissect every piece to its most to really, to really understand, uh, where we can go with this. I really appreciate it. I've said this before, I'll, I'll keep on saying it, uh, they are, they're a really phenomenal group of people and very intuitive. And I think, you know, by touring the elementary schools while the schools were actually in session, seeing the impact that each individual classroom has, uh, from pre-K through fourth grade, uh, it really was eye-opening. And then really taking that tour through LRP to see, you know, where we are condition-wise within the building and the size of that building and the grounds itself really brought a, a, a new perspective because we've been spending a lot of time looking at charts, looking at, um, you know, s- blueprints, things of that sort to really get a better understanding. But when you're involved and you're deep into that, um, it's really been very, very beneficial. And it's also been beneficial where we had Dan Dressel, our architect, come last meeting and he's willing to come back out again to answer further questions. So, um, instead of rushing that, we really want to, to, to pay some close attention and give time to that. Uh, security update, the interview. So we, um, last board meeting, you, uh, the board approved the job description for armed officers and we immediately went into motion after that was approved to put out, um, the all-call for interested candidates. So interviews for phase one of the armed security officer took place this past Thursday. There had been over 30 applicant, applicants from an array of backgrounds. The candidate pool had been narrowed down to 10 candidates, qualified candidates, I should say. A committee was assembled with, uh, with administrator and teacher representation and previously retired and current law enforcement personnel. Out of the phase one of the 10 candidates, seven have been narrowed down for the second round. The next round will involve, uh, situational scenarios, uh, that will enable the candidates to show how they would react to each situation. And that will be held later this month on November 15th. And overall, our ultimate goal is to have an officer in each building. Um, and looking at the high school, we would have to, we would look at a rotational schedule because it is a larger building as well as having evening events, sporting events, um, as Ian was saying before, even play, the, uh, theatrical arts events. And also having people that would be able to be a rotation on-call, uh, based on the need for, um, substitute work, um, and on-call work. So we are moving forward, I have to say, that that committee, uh, it was priceless. Especially having the input of the, uh, the teaching repri- teacher representation and the administrative representation because of what we deal with every day on a daily basis. But having, uh, current and retired law enforcement, their insight was so valuable to understand really what could happen and what are, what our expectation as a district would be. Um, so I'm very appreciative of, of everybody on that committee and, uh, appreciative that they're coming back. Spending a lot of time, there's a lot of, it's a rigorous process that we're putting the candidates through because our, our goal is whoever we do select, they have to be the right fit for us here in Cedar Grove. Not just anywhere, it's here in Cedar Grove. So I do appreciate that. And just to piggyback a little bit, uh, more on the security issues, um, Stonegate and Associates, these were our contracted auditors, uh, they have completed their, uh, school assessments. That's the inside and outside. Uh, they have met with, um, administration, uh, and our district staff and they, uh, on preparing, and they're preparing a report to be presented to the board shortly. Uh, we had a meeting today with the Cedar Grove Police Department and this was about procedures and protocols and our partnership, working together and keeping our schools safe. Um, our preliminary report was very encouraging. Uh, they had a lot of, uh, positive things to say about what we've been doing over the past several years. Uh, so we look forward to presenting that to the board, um, as well as sharing, uh, future endeavors as we move forward with, uh, security.
Is there, um, any estimated timeline on that presentation?
Uh, I would say, I, I.
I won't hold you to it.
Please don't hold me to it. Um, I, I'd say January, maybe December. But we want to make sure that we have all of, you know, they want to make sure they have all their ducks in a row. They've already concluded the majority of the report. Um, like I said, there's a lot of positives that come out of it and some, and, and there's also pieces that we can improve upon, but that's what we, why we wanted them to come in. So I would say, let's, let's look around in January. This way, if it happens in December, it looks better. I said that to you, so, all right?
Okay, great.
Sure.
Thank you. I appreciate that update and, um, you know, I have to say, I, I commend you doing a really nice job with this. And, um, I'm looking forward to moving on to the next phase and, um, getting the, the armed security guards. It's not a firm, it's not a security firm.
Nope.
It's an armed security guards that will be in all of our buildings. So we are committed to that, not just one building, all of our buildings. Okay, so thank you for that update.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Okay, so, uh, moving on. Under minutes, can I please have a motion for B1 through B5?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Shonner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under bills, motion for D6.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Shonner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, under business, this one's a little bit lengthy, B7 through B22.
So move.
Yes.
So move.
Second?
Uh, second, I have a comment.
Yes, uh, discussion. I, I have a couple of things too. Again, I want, I would like to take an opportunity to thank all of Cedar Grove and the Storms family for your, um, amazing donation. And, uh, Nikki was a special little boy and he will be remembered forever. I attended that tricky tray and, uh, it was incredible the way this community came together. Um, so I, I'm very proud of that. And I look forward to seeing these, uh, our children enjoy that time. So, thank you. I appreciate that. And thank you to the whole community for coming together. So that was a discussion on B9 and, let me see. That's it for that one for me. Any other discussion?
No.
No.
Uh, yeah, I, I wanted to, I'll piggyback off of Mrs. Dora's comments. Thank you very much. My heart breaks for you, for all of you. But I think keeping his memory alive is obviously a beautiful thing. And I, I commend the town, the out-of-town people that helped this situation. The FSA, look, I commend them, we all know I'm a big FSA supporter, okay? But the, the undertaking of this is a massive, massive financial scenario, right? And also time-consuming while their hearts are broken as well. Because I'm sure their, their kids and the parents are friends with the family. The, the staff, I mean, I, I commend everybody. I don't know how else to say it. I, I do. My heart breaks for, for you. It really does. But I think it's a beautiful thing what the FSA and the school district has done to try to keep his memory alive for your family and for the kids. So thank you.
Any other discussion on any of them?
I did in my report, yeah. I, I do want to comment on B8, just, it is a, it's a professional development. Sorry, I lost the words there for our teachers. This is again, it piggybacks over what Mr. Pallack said earlier about really bringing a focus on addressing our, the academic challenges that are fallout from the pandemic. So this is a professional development, bringing in some, a literacy program to continue to support our students. So I look forward to seeing the, the benefits of that. So if there's no other discussion, can a roll call, please, Mr. DeVita?
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes, abstaining from B50.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Okay, under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S18?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? I have discussion. Very talkative tonight. Under S5, a motion to accept the resignation of Christopher Kinney, Director of Special Services. I do want to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Kinney for his time and his dedication, his commitment to the students of Cedar Grove. He is resigning his, his position because he is accepting, as you can read, he's accepting a position in the Garwood School District as superintendent slash director of special services there. So I wish him all the luck and prosperity in his new phase of his journey. We will miss him here in Cedar Grove, but best of luck, Mr. Kinney. That's all I got. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes, S8 abstain on assistant baseball.
Mr. Shoner.
Uh, yes, to everything. I'm abstaining to S1.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Okay. At this time, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on or off the agenda. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, your address, municipality of residence, and group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or the individual board member. Presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy or is abusive, obscene, or may be defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect the privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Okay, first we have Mr. Palomera. Good evening.
Hello, my name is Michael Palomera and I live at 2A5 Ridge Road. I'm here to talk about test scores and student performance. Before COVID, our school ranked in the middle, you know, which means on, on an achievement scale that we were behind, right? COVID happened, it affected us all, it affected the students. So we're probably down a little bit further. I've spoken to a number of parents and a number of teachers. I trade myself for developer, but specifically I helped start companies. At some of the best companies I've worked at, you ask the employees what they needed, what they need. And I started asking teachers in the town what they need. And we, we might need to give them a little bit more resources. They might be a bit resource poor in kind of some basic things, right? My other comment would say is, I started looking at other high-performance schools in New Jersey and in Massachusetts. Schools that call themselves high-performing school systems and the methodology behind high-performing school systems. I would ask the board to take a look at some of those resources and see if we can replicate some of those things like at Middle Science, Science and Tech, like Mendham, and see if we can apply it here. I was very encouraged by the teachers. You know, I believe they have the capacity to not only get our test scores higher, but I believe that they can produce, you know, highly, you know, highly effective students, you know, highly successful students. I, I would just like to ask the board, you know, how they felt about it and what plans that they have to kind of meet that mission.
Well, I could absolutely answer that question for you. Without a doubt, we have some of the best teachers in the state of New Jersey. There's no question about that. We, as a board, agree with you 100%. Our teachers most certainly can rise, raise our students to, to meet their potential. There's no question about that. This board is committed, as I said earlier, to continuing to provide the teachers with the resources that you, that they need. You're absolutely right. Teachers have a voice, right? This board is committed to student voice, teacher voice, and parent voice, community voice, right? It's not, it's not just us making decisions, it's not just the superintendent making decisions. This is a, it takes a village, right? And this board is committed to that. And we are continuously analyzing, Mr. Grosso is continually working with the administration, analyzing where our strengths are, where our weaknesses are. And we talked at the last meeting about our Lincoln, where it pinpoints exactly where our students are falling short. We are putting a lot of effort into standard recovery, right? Because we missed a lot. Everybody missed a lot. So we have to find a way to make up and continue to keep moving forward. So we are committed to doing the work on doing that standard recovery, recovering the standards that did not get addressed because we were working virtually or at home. But this board is committed to doing that and we're already actively doing that. One of the things that, resolution we passed tonight was bringing in, you know, professional development and resources for our staff to, to work on the literacy challenges that we're facing, so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
I, I would also like to, to thank Ian, you know, I, you know, Ian is, he's good. He's, you know, listening to the people around him, he's listening to the teachers around him and he's trying to show them appreciation as well.
Yep.
Which gives me the sense that they probably need more help, you know. I'd also like to thank Mr. Grosso. I appreciate your hard work. You have my support 150% and I'd like to do anything I can to help you and the administration.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palomera. Next we have Mr. Beckett.
Hello, Romani Beckett, Rockledge Place, Cedar Grove. I'd like to discuss a couple of points on the debrief or the update from our superintendent, Mr. Grosso. We heard about the long-term, short-term solution regarding the committee referendum, which by the way, I took your recommendation and enjoyed. I just could not attend due to conflict. But if you can expand on the, if you can expand on the short-term solution, the long-term obviously is rebuilding LRP. So I would appreciate if you can expand on the short-term solution if that's possible. On the security, one, one comment, you know, based on your comment, you mentioned 10 is progressing to 10 candidates, progressing to the second round with situational interview, seeing how they react. My, my question, my follow-up question to this, do we have an expert setting up those situational interview question or, or the situation itself, scenarios, and see if they react in a way from an expert, you know, expert lenses rather than just, you know, again, I think this area require an expert point of view. Last, last meeting, I think the community asked for detail on the, on the security plan and we said we cannot jeopardize the security, which is okay. I went and did a research on the New Jersey Safety and Security Manual published by the New Jersey Department of Education. There is some component of the plan require communication with emergency responder, staff, student parents, such as identify and document crisis communication procedure with the following groups, which I mentioned first. So maybe we can share certain portion of the plan that, you know, is required regardless by President of New Jersey Department of Education. So that's a couple of points. I would like to also add a couple of comment about the signup sheet. Some people likes to, you know, they come in here, you know, thinking they're not going to talk and they don't sign up. And then when we hear the update, we like to do now, oh, I have a question, I have a follow-up. But because we did not sign up, we don't get the opportunity to speak. So I'm recommending two options. Either we leave the signup sheet until the public, you know, comments section is open. So they have, we have a chance after we hear the update. Or we can just open it after the signup, you know, everyone on the signup sheet has spoken. So that's, that's two option, obviously. It's up to you. So I, I spoke a lot here, so I wonder if there is any response to my questions.
Well, I'll, I'll start with your last question regarding the signup. I will certainly get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Point well taken. And the second question about the, having a professional with the scenarios, the answer is yes. And then I will defer to Mr. Grosso for the other two.
So as far as, I'll go with your first question, which was referendum and, and short-term. So the, the committee has been discussing some short-term solutions. We've talked about an array of different options, which, some of those options range from, from trailers which have been brought up here in, in this forum. It was brought up in, you know, in our, our referendum committee meeting as well. We looked at scheduling, we have looked at utilizing other additional spaces within our building. So once we have, once the, the community forum or committee comes up with some recommendations, we'll be able to expand a little bit more upon those pieces. But I will share that, looking at that, you, I'll give you another scenario. We've even looked at redistricting. We're not a large district, so shifting that line back and forth is really not going to give us a, a lot of space. But there are some short-term pieces that we can utilize and look at where we're, when we look at the Hilltop itself. We also investigated the idea of looking at, came up at a meeting, even our large community meeting and even here about, can you place people back at the high school? Moving, shifting grades around for a short-term, short-term solution. So we've been exploring a lot of those pieces. Some of them, to be quite honest with you, were not viable even for a short-term solution. So we're giving a lot of thought into that. The ultimate goal is, when we look at this, and we've talked a lot about this during our committee meetings, is that whatever decision is made, that decision, whether it's short-term and long-term, it has to be sustainable over a large period of time. We cannot come back to the table again multiple years later and say, hey folks, we need to do this now. So it has to be something that we can sustain for a long period of time. And part of what we've been looking at is what have been some of the error of our ways from 10, 20, 30 years ago. We're, we're facing a very different issue and problem right now at this particular moment in time. So we want to take that head-on. I'm very confident with the group that, that we've all been working with together. Like I said, they're very insightful. There's a large team of educators on there who understand the field, understand the progression of enrollment, as well as contractors as well, who, who are on that, that committee. So we've got some very, very knowledgeable people who are working very, very hard and I look forward to presenting that to the board as we, we move forward. As far as security goes, I, you know, President Dora had actually just shared that we do. We have, I'm very impressed with our group that we have here. Again, like I've shared, we have educators on that group as well as current and previous or retired law enforcement. We are relying heavily on our, on our retired and our current law enforcement members to help provide us with scenarios and as well as educators. You know, those administrators and teachers who are in the building face that, that issue every day. So it's very different with what you would face in a hospital or corporate setting compared to what you would face with, with dealing with the lives of, of young children every day. So getting their perspective as well as law enforcement is very helpful for us to set expectations for our recommendations to the board on who will hold those positions here in this district. Because like I said, it has to be the right fit for Cedar Grove. It's not a blanketed person that has been in law enforcement, previously in law enforcement because the way we may handle a situation in, in a different community may not be the way that we handle it in our community. And what our expectations are, maybe our expectations are a lot higher. So we want to be very, very clear with that, relay that to our candidates and I'm very appreciative of, of that with, with the panel that we have. And as far as the security plan, I know you talked about the emergency response to the public. There are certain things in there that you are getting that are a part of the security plan every time. So for example, if Mr. Mattio is calling a lockdown or a fire drill, there is state law on now, there's state law on announcing when you had it, how you, how you conduct it. So those are the pieces that we can, we can relay to the public. There, but again, like we shared last time, there are certain pieces that you can't, because it would, it, it would, it would jeopardize the, the safety and security of how we operate, the structure in which, which we operate. But those are types of things that we, we could definitely talk about. And I encourage you, if you ever want to sit down and talk about some of those things with me, please make a meeting. We can sit down together. I'd be more than happy to, to do that with you.
Absolutely. One, one, one comment about the viable option, you know, for the short duration, you know, short-term solution. What are, how are we combating that for, from a teacher perspective? Because the morale, we want to bring up the morale, right? We want to make sure our teachers are set, like Mr. Bellamero's, you know, indicated, stated. We want to make sure they're happy. So if I'm getting 23 students at South End versus 16, 18, you know, like I spoke the last time.
Right.
I mean, we, we really need to do something at least to help, you know, the student that's going to feed into the same middle school and high school because we don't want them to struggle going into and we want them to be on the same level as North End, a blue ribbon status.
Right.
So that's one comment on the security guard. I'm not sure if you're at liberty to answer the question or not, is, do we have adequate coverage? I think you mentioned, like if you have, like someone call out sick.
Yes, I can answer that. We have adequate, we are preparing for that.
Okay.
Yes.
It's a must.
Yes, it's absolutely a must.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Beckett. And next we have Mr. Stringer. Good evening.
Yes, Leo Stringer for HABU Terrace. Okay, I just have a couple of things. You touched base on, across with most of the security guard, but I have a question on it. Aside of our schools, I believe I've counted, just off the top of my head, 14 entrances in Cedar Grove High School, for an example. And we're going to have one security guard in the building at a time. And if we're only hiring, what you're saying, four people with possible-
No, we didn't say four people.
Okay, three, four.
No, we said there will, we are committed to having at least one in every building with the idea of having, I believe Mr. Grosso said possibly multiple at the high school because it is a larger building. And we also talked about maybe hiring six, depending on what the pool is, so that some, sometimes people do have to call out.
Exactly, that's what- Exactly, that's what, that was my concern.
So we are certainly prepared to address that issue.
And I'm actually thrilled that you're using retired law enforcement rather than a security company. I'm glad we went away, changed that, changed that direction.
There was never a use to, never a decision to use a security firm, never.
One meeting, we mentioned security firm.
Nope, there was never, so I'm glad we cleared that up.
Okay, great, that's, I think it's much better, much better option. And I also have a question, I guess you can call it transparency. Ian had mentioned the homecoming, and he gave a really good presentation on how the students enjoyed the homecoming, looked forward to it, and were thrilled about it. But it had a bumpy road the last couple of days, on the Friday before the dance, where Mr. Barrett sent out an email that said they were going to cancel it because no one had signed up, and it's going to, he told me in an email conversation, it would cost thousands of dollars if we don't have enough sign-ups, but I had no idea how many signed up and how many more he needed. You know, it ended up, did get a lot of, a lot of people come in, but there's, the communication was bad. And that home, that dance in particular, that had an option for pay at the door. And it was fundraiser, pay at the door is five dollars more, it was $20. So you actually make more money paying at the door, and a lot of people had planned on doing that. So there was a lot of confusion there. I don't know why we would cancel the homecoming because we didn't have enough people. That's something that I think would send a bad message to the kids, and, you know, kids that wanted to go to homecoming were not, were not thrilled by that.
I'll speak to that when you're, when you're done, is that your last question?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, so regarding the homecoming, my understanding was that a lot, first of all, it's a fundraiser. So in any fundraiser, if you don't have a certain amount of people, it's a loss. Student council would have taken a loss. So it wasn't going to be canceled arbitrarily, just, let's just cancel it. It was going to be canceled if the interest level did not increase. Would people plan to come at the door? We would never know. I think last year, more people came and signed up initially, but there was a risk that I think the administration made a decision they weren't willing to take that the student council would lose a significant amount of money if a certain amount of people did not attend. So when Mr. Bear sent out that email, it sparked a lot of attention from people, and people brought in their permission slips, and it went on. So I just want to make that clear, it wasn't just an arbitrary decision to, we're just going to cancel it, it would have buried the student council financially. And so he put out the notification, and people responded, so it did exactly what it needed to do.
Yeah, I think a lot of people had the option, had the understanding that they could pay at the door.
Yep.
That's why-
Yep, so something that we could have learned, we'll learn for, for next year. We'll learn something for next year that maybe if you pay at the door, you still have to indicate you're coming.
Exactly.
So that we're not in this position again.
Yeah, so you have an idea, work out in the end.
So thank you, I appreciate your comment. All right, so that's all I have at this time, so I do want to, I close that portion of the meeting. So our next meeting is December 13th. Times are the same, 6:30 is executive, 7:30 is open, the open meeting. It will be at Memorial High School, and, I mean, middle school, sorry, thank you. Memorial Middle School. I do want to say before I adjourn the meeting, I want to wish the four community members who are running for Board of Ed, tomorrow is election day. I encourage everybody, and you're listening at home, everybody, please go out and vote, it's very important. I wish the four lots of luck, and I look forward to working with whoever joins our board. And so can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moves.
Second.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.